Good evening. It's 6 o'clock. This is the Wabash City School Board meeting for September 16th, 2024. Roll call.
Everyone is present.
Having a quorum, I call the meeting to order. It's for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wabash City Schools' mission is that Wabash City Schools provide a relevant and rigorous education founded upon relationships to ensure each student is college and career-ready for success in a global community. Welcome. There are no recognitions tonight. There is a revision. We will approve revision 4.h. to the board agenda. I'll accept a motion.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of accepting the revision, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item H, the consent agenda. We have minutes from September 3rd, 2024. There's some claims, no donations tonight, and no financials this evening. I'll accept a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. The next regular scheduled board meeting will be Monday, October 7th, 2024, here at City Hall, at 6:00 PM. There's some items of communication. There's no old business, new business. Item A, board will vote on the proposal to amend Section 1.1 of the Heartland Career Center operating agreement.
Just a reminder, North Miami brought a letter asking that the Section 1.1 be amended to the Board of Managers will consist of five members, and the five members will be the superintendents of the five school corporations. And then North Manchester brought a letter with a proposed amendment to Section 1.1 that the Board of Managers will consist of five members, one board member representative appointed by the governing body of each member school corporation board, and the superintendent from each board shall accompany the representative to each Heartland Board meeting. Those are the two options that we need to decide.
Does anyone want to make a motion to accept one of the proposals?
What does the, what does the, how does the current Section 1.1 read?
It currently states the Board of Managers shall consist of five members, one appointed by the governing body of each member. So essentially, it doesn't have to be a board member. It doesn't have to be the superintendent. It could be Mr. Smith, who comes to our board meetings, and we feel like he's a good representative of our district.
So each board has the right to appoint a representative of their choice, is how it currently reads?
Correct. Unless everybody votes on the proposal by
North Miami.
North Miami, then they have to approve the superintendent, right? The superintendent has to be the representative.
Yeah. It would either be, it would be the superintendent, or it would be a board member with the superintendent.
For the North Manchester one. So it's North Miami, or it has to be the superintendent, or North Manchester, and it has to be an appointee and the superintendent.
It has to be a board member.
A board member and a superintendent.
And the superintendent.
The board member is the voting member, though, in that scenario, correct?
Correct.
Or the, not necessarily the, does it say board member, or does it say?
It says board member.
Yeah. So if the board member's not present, and the superintendent is there, the superintendent cannot vote in their place.
Okay.
So one is superintendent's only. The other one is a board member plus the superintendent, but only the board member votes.
Correct. And it currently states that it's just a representative of the school district.
In the first one, then, the superintendent is the voting member.
Correct.
Is the voter. Okay.
Not to overcomplicate this, but looking at the North Manchester board's list, it says one board member representative. So I'm not sure that actually means a board member. It could be a representative designated by the board members.
That is true. I would say that his intention's probably not that.
His intention is that it's a board member?
Correct.
Okay.
I would think so.
Technically.
Yeah, language is board, board vendor.
Yes.
We could table it and leave it the way it is, or we could choose one of these two and vote to approve to amend them to those.
So I guess my question is, if we were to table it or not vote for one of those options, are we, could we be outvoted, I suppose, if other?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I'm just asking.
If three vote in one direction, regardless of whether we vote in that direction or not, if three of the five.
We go that direction, yeah.
I mean, if we table it and it's split 2-2, then it probably, either we would have to take it back up at that point,
Okay.
or it dies because there's no
Support.
Well, there's no majority.
That's what I meant.
And I don't know if we could just leave it as it is, and then as the group decide that we want the superintendent to be our representative.
I think we should.
That is, I guess that's my, that's my opinion. It's already written that the, that the board can appoint whoever they want. So the boards that want the superintendent can appoint the superintendent.
But isn't the whole point of doing this so that the superintendents are all the appointee, are all the board members of Heartland, and they can, it's easier, we're cutting out a step? So if everybody decides to leave it as it is, or if we decide to leave it as it is, and several others do too, and the majority doesn't make it that way, to where the superintendent is the Heartland board member, then we're still in the same kind of, not pickle, but situation we are in now. So in my opinion, I think we should go ahead, somebody needs to make a motion that we, because this is what we're going to do anyways, is have Amy be our representative, Dr. Sibley. So I think we should, in my opinion, vote with the North Miamis with that one, and say, and make the superintendent the representative for Heartland. Did I word that right?
Yeah, I think so. Matt made the point at the last meeting that some other corporations, board member representatives, had caused us to miss out on some opportunities. So it might not affect us so much if we're going to appoint Dr. Sibley anyway, but we're sort of mandating that other school corporations appoint their superintendent, if you went with the North Miami one.
So if enough, if, if three out of the five schools vote this way, then everybody has to do it, right?
It's a majority.
Yeah.
Hey, just, just for the record, I'm not opposed to Dr. Sibley being our representative. I think that, or whoever our superintendent may be down the line, I don't have a problem with our board appointing our superintendent to represent us. I think that the bylaws already allow for that. So I think if, if the school boards wanted that to happen, then they could go ahead and do it immediately if that's what they wanted to do. So from that perspective, I don't think, my personal opinion is it doesn't need to be changed. It already allows for that.
Is there anyone that would like to make a motion to make it that the superintendent has to be the representative to Heartland? Are we thinking? Because I still feel like if we left it as is, we wouldn't, we would still have Dr. Sibley be a representative, but if the other schools decided to leave it as is, they wouldn't necessarily do that.
We might get our hands forced.
And it would just be, I mean, willy-nilly, and then we'd still have the same issues. So I think if everybody just.
Jordan, should we vote on both of these proposals anyway, so that we have an up or down vote for Heartland?
Well, I mean, you need a motion to take any action.
I understand that, but I mean, shouldn't we probably do it both of them? Like, so there's an up or down vote to give to Heartland on these things?
Well, your three options are do nothing, approve North Miami, approve North Manchester. So however you get there procedurally, I don't think matters.
I would think we would just have to approve one. And the other one, we, I don't know. Is that what you are saying? That we don't have to take a vote on both of the second and third option?
Well, I think you would make a motion for one.
Yeah.
And if that gets voted down, then somebody can make a motion for the other one, if that's what they wanted to do.
Yeah. But if it gets voted yes, then, then we're done.
Effectively, it's resolved.
I'll make the motion. I motion to have the school board representative be the superintendent, and go with the North Miami.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there anything else I need to say, we need to say on that? Board will vote on Heartland Career Center sale of property for NIPSCO easement.
Okay, so the price for the easement compensation has gone up from $21,977 to $26,028.75. I know we are really rushing to try and get this done, because, well, NIPSCO is, because they've been wanting to start this a long time ago.
Sure.
Of course, Floyd and I have had the conversation of, well, we waited a little bit, and it's already gone up. So if we keep waiting, is it going to go up more?
Stock market.
But I know that, you know, they really want to get the project going, and I know it's important. So I would motion to approve the NIPSCO compensation easement.
Sale of property.
Sale of property.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
I abstain on that, since it's for, ultimately for the company I work for.
Okay. Item C, approve recommendation to adopt the following resolutions. One, resolution determining need for project. Two, resolution reapproving building corporation. And three, resolution approving form of lease. Discussion.
We do have copies of the resolution, if anybody wanted to look at them. The first one, or these three are required for our upcoming project. As required by the school leasing statute, which is Indiana Code 20-47-3, the board must determine that there is a need for the project. The first resolution accomplishes that. The second resolution reapproves our building corporation. In order for the building corporation, which is a not-for-profit Indiana corporation, to issue tax-exempt bonds, the IRS requires that the school board approve the building corporation and authorize it to issue tax-exempt bonds on behalf of the school. That is our second resolution. And the last resolution approves the form of lease. The school corporation is funding this project through a lease financing, as it's done with other past construction and renovation projects. Lease financings are used by school corporations across Indiana in order to borrow for renovation and construction. This type of financing does not count against the school corporation's constitutional debt allowance. The building corporation will purchase a portion of the building at the closing for at least the appraisal value. The building corporation will then lease that portion of the building back to the school corporation. The lease rental due from the school corporation will be paid from property taxes, and the lease rental, as shown as a maximum amount in the lease, will be sufficient to pay the principal and interest due to the bondholders.
Questions from the board?
Just for clarification, this project is to fund the boiler replacement at the high school, middle school, correct?
Yep, boiler replacement, soft, or, yeah, water, soft water.
It's, it's the water heater system in high school?
Yeah.
And the current boilers that we have are 70-plus years old.
Yes.
And.
Very inefficient and ready to be put to pasture.
1948, 1952.
I think I've said it before in one of these meetings, I think we got our money's worth out of them. But I would hate to see us not do something, and, and them go out, and we be stuck in the middle winter without boilers that are working.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more questions? All those in favor of approving the resolutions, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item D, approve resignation from the following classified staff. One, Sandy Dempsey as cafeteria employee, effective September 13th, 2024.
Second.
Discussion.
I would like to thank Ms. Dempsey for her time and service to Wabash City Schools.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item E, approve Jennifer Denny as fifth and sixth grade choir teacher and choir assistant for sinfonaires with additional compensation of $8,263.50. This is to compensate her for teaching through her lunch and prep, as well as compensating her for planning outside of contract time. This is retroactive to September 2nd, 2024, and will be paid over the remainder of the 2024 to 2025 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So we were able to rearrange Mrs. Denny's schedule for her to cover the fifth and sixth grade choir rotations. Like Mrs. Hipskin mentioned, to do this, she has to work through her lunch and prep. The additional compensation will also pay for her, for additional planning and working between the two buildings. We are thankful that Mrs. Denny is taking on this. I know she does a wonderful job at OJ, and I know she'll do a great job with our fifth and sixth graders.
Between the two, so we lost our music director for the middle school, high school.
Yes.
And we have an adjunct teacher.
Yes.
And then Mrs. Denny is going to handle the fifth and sixth grade. Salaries between the two, how does that compare to?
It was probably $15,000 to $20,000 less.
Less. Not including any kind of benefits or anything?
No, that's including, like, if you include benefits, yeah.
I was just curious how that, how that
Yeah, that's a good question.
All came out.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions from the board? All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item F, approve the following for athletics for 2025 to, for 2024 to 2025. Girls soccer assistant coach, Scott Dinkins.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Scott really has been serving in that job. He started as a volunteer, along with a couple other ladies, but he's there every day. He's at every game, he's at every practice. And I told Kisha, why, why didn't we just make him the assistant coach? He wasn't sure he'd be able to be there every day like that, but he is. So I, I told her we should move him to, into that capacity and sugar. So that's, so he's already been approved as a volunteer, now we're just moving him into the assistant job.
Okay. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item G, approve recommendation to send one more staff member to the Elevating Education Conference in Indianapolis, December 3 through 4, 2024. Expenses for the additional person will be paid from Title II money.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
The board has already approved a team to attend this conference. We would like to add Josie Philippi. When we got the names, she had not been hired yet. This conference really, it's put on by the Indiana IEP technical assistance. So while it's not a special ed conference, there will be a lot of sessions, and with her being a beginning special ed teacher, I think it would be good to slide her in there. The only additional expense will be for the registration and the meals, because we currently have a room with a female in it that only has one person, so she can just go into that room.
Okay.
All those in favor of approving the recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item H, board will be updated on 2024 iLearn and iRead results.
Okay, let's see if I can get this to show up there for you. Okay, so I've combined this into one presentation, both the iLearn, which is grades three through eight, and the iRead, which is now grades second and third. As we look at the data today, we are going to focus on cohort data. When you compare third grade scores from one year to third grade scores of this year, it's really comparing apples to oranges, because it's not the same group of students. So we'll be looking at cohort pass rates. In language arts, we saw cohort increases in three grade levels. Two of those were double-digit increases, which is pretty amazing. Overall, we had a 1.9% increase in language arts across all grade levels. So as you can see, grade five had a 12.9% increase, and grade seven had a 29% increase in pass rates. In math, we saw cohort increases in two grade levels with just an overall slight decrease. We went down by 0.3%. Grades five and seven both went up 5.6 and 2.3%. So we'll start with our language arts data. We had, we only had one grade level that outperformed the state average, and that was seventh grade. The state average was 41.8. They were at 53.8. The overall state average was 41%, so we're about 8.2% below that mark. Improving our language arts instruction is key to increasing these scores. At OJ, we now have a literacy coach who will work with our teachers to strengthen their reading instruction. At the middle school, our teachers need to continue to work as a PLC to share best practices with really using our fifth and seventh grade teachers leading that charge. In math, all grade levels are performing below the state average. But the state averages drop from third, starting at 52.4%, down to 31% at eighth grade. So that is something that's common across the state. They start really high in third grade, and then each year, the pass rates continue to decline. Again, focusing on those math instructional practices is key to improving these. We also need to be sure that we're assessing frequently, so we can fill gaps in learning along the way, and we don't wait until it's too late. And that is where the PLC and the RTI process come into play. For our science, the state has not released any science scores yet, so I just left that blank. Social studies, we saw a big jump in our scores, and we did perform above state average in fifth grade social studies. Moving on to iRead, this is just information about it. It's administered in third grade, but starting this year, it will be administered in both second and third grade. Last year, we did pilot it with our second grade. Actually, I think we did the last two years. So we did get a jump on that, which was a good thing. Students in the past that did not pass iRead could qualify for a good cause exemption if they were English learners, students with disabilities, or students who had already been retained twice would be eligible for those good cause exemptions. So looking at our data, this is iRead data for third graders for the past four years. Because each year is a different group of kids, you really can't do any cohort comparisons. For last year, our first-time pass rate, and that also include, included third graders that tested as second graders and passed. So if they take it in second grade and they pass, they do not have to take it again in third grade. Our pass rate was 77.2%. We did have, of our 92 students, we had eight that qualify for those good cause exemptions. So we do not feel like they need to be retained, moving, they need to move forward. So if you factor those into the equation, we do have an adjusted pass rate of 84.5%. You can see that compared to the private school and public school state pass rates, we are below those, because we should use that 77.2 when we compare, because those state rates do not include good cause exemptions. For our second graders that took it last year, we had a 51% pass rate. So those students that passed last year will not have to take iRead 3 this year as third graders.
They're not counted in any of that data then, for the current year, if they didn't have to retake it?
They will be for this year's data, so. Now, there are some big changes for iRead, and this is due to legislation that was passed, went into effect July 1st. So all students beginning in second grade will take iRead. In the past, you could opt into it. Now, you, you, you don't have a choice. The students that do not pass will have to continue to take that test through the sixth grade summer administration or until they pass it. So if I do not pass it in second grade, I will have to go to summer school, take it in the summer. I'll have to take it in third grade, go to summer school, take it in the summer, and continue to take it fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, until I pass it. Senate Enrolled Act I also requires that third grade students that do not pass, they have to be retained. If they do not pass iRead after multiple test administration opportunities. So if a third grade student takes it in the spring and they do not pass, they attend summer school and they do not pass, we have to keep, we have to hold them back. They have made some changes to good, the good cause exemption. So we still have the special ed, that if, an EL, so if a student's a special ed or an EL student, their case conference or their ILP committee can determine that they need to move on to the next grade level. They have added that if a student passes math iLearn but did not pass iRead in third grade, they can be moved on. Also, if they've been retained twice and received intensive intervention, so a student who was retained twice in kindergarten, first, second grade, and they've already had intensive intervention, which would most likely be Tier 1 or title services, they can be moved forward. And then if they've previously been retained in third grade, so if we have a third grade student that does not pass, and we hold them back, if they do not pass the next year, they do get to move forward to fourth grade at that point. That we don't just keep holding them back in third grade. So this is something that is going to be quite different for our school, every school across the state. We are going to have a meeting, an iRead meeting, with second grade and third grade families, so we can explain this to them. Summer school for non-passers, we now have to offer summer school for second grade and third grade. We've always offered third grade reading intervention, and then they retake iRead. Starting next year, we will have to offer it or have it for second grade students that are considered at risk on the iRead. And if a student does not attend, or they attend less than 90%, and they don't pass, they have to participate in an individual reading plan. And they have not shared with us what that is yet. So that is going to be something that when it gets time to have summer school, our families need to understand that we need them to come to summer school. We offer transportation to get them there, we offer breakfast, I think we offer lunch, too. So if we have students that do not pass, we need them to come to summer school, so they can take this, get the remediation they need, and then retake. So moving forward, when we look at all of these things, literacy obviously is going to be a big focus. We'll continue to use our Roxy reading curriculum for interventions. That does align with the science of reading. We are going to begin examining possible reading curriculums. They have all the, there are, I believe, five different vendors that you can get reading curriculum through in the state of Indiana. They have those available at Region 8. We're going to take a team to go look at those and start that process. The big thing is going to be, how do we fund that? We have joined the Indiana Literacy Cadre. We have our coach, Mrs. Ballinger, and she is working with our teachers in grades K through 3 to work on literacy instruction. I also know that there are things that, they're going to be provided, we are going to be provided through the cadre that'll be free. So that might be something that, instead of adopting a curriculum, if we get things from them, we will be able to use, because all of it will align with the science of reading. We need to continue to supplement our math curriculum. The use of Alex in grades three through eight, I think is going to be very important. And then use NWEA data to pinpoint remediation groups. I know that at both OJ and starting this year at LH Carpenter, they're using that data to put together their WIN groups to determine what students need remediation, and how do we provide that to them. We are also training our staff on RTI. Like I said, we have to respond sooner. We can't wait until test time, you know, end of the year. We need to be constantly teaching, assessing, and then reteaching. Our staff PD days this year are focused on improvement of instruction. One of the, my favorite presenters at PLC is Mike Mattos, and many, many times, I've heard him say that when the adults do better, students do better. So we have to work on improving our instruction. And then at the middle school level, we need to develop a plan for using the iLearn checkpoint assessment data. So starting next year, iLearn is going to look different for our grades three through eight. And our middle school has opted into this iLearn checkpoint pilot for this year. So at the middle school, instead of taking NWEA three times, they're doing these iLearn checkpoints. I was excited that the middle school was willing to do that, because it allows us to, one, see what the tests are going to look like, and then see what kind of data we're getting back, and come up with a plan of how can we use that data once we give our first checkpoint to spiral back and remediate based on the data that we get throughout the year. So starting next year in grades three through eight, they will do those iLearn checkpoints throughout the year.
Questions from the board?
How many years ago was it that we adopted a math curriculum across the entire...
This is year three.
Is it concerning to you that in year three, our numbers have gone down? Instead of continuing to improve?
Knowing that it was .3, if it would have been like two or three percentage points, I probably would have been concerned. But knowing that if we graduate a class out of eighth grade that has a higher score and you bring one in, again, we continue to look at what are we doing in our math? We continue to look at ways to supplement that. We're trying through Title. We have a new program to use at kindergarten first and second to really help with math fluency. So I knew it wasn't, it wouldn't, you know, we weren't going to be up to 40, 50% overnight. It's going to take time.
Any other questions? Okay, items from the superintendent.
Okay. Well, actually, let me... So we have submitted our budget to, into Gateway, to the DLGF. As a reminder, because we are the city schools, this board does not approve our budget. Instead, the city council will go through that process. The public hearing on our budget is next Monday, September 23rd. And then the adoption meeting will be at the city council meeting on September 28th. So I'm going to quickly go through our budget estimates. Let's see if I can get it to open. And proposed tax rates for each of our funds. So the first one that's going to come up is our rainy day fund. In the past, we have not submitted anything for rainy day. And this year, we did. We put in a budget of $400,000 for rainy day. It shows that we will end the year at around $402,000. The appropriation that we put in was $400,000. The reason why I did this was if we decide that we need to use rainy day funds, we've already have it appropriated into two different pots. So if we decide to spend on those things, we won't have to do the request for an additional appropriation. The board would have to pass a resolution to give permission to spend it, but we don't have to go through that process. So that's just, I've just done that more of a just-in-case if we need to spend. Looking at our debt service, we are going to end with about $250,000 in debt service. I will say that we are going to have to do a request for an additional appropriation in debt service, because we had a debt payment that was due in December of '23, but it did not get paid until January of '24. So that payment has made it where we have gone over our appropriation for this year. We have the funds, but we have to get the permission to go over that appropriation. So we'll go through that process probably in October, just to make sure that we've got it taken care of before the end of the year. Our tax levy, max levy, is $2.7 million. We have miscellaneous revenue. So our total revenues is about $2.8 million. Our budget, our debt payments, we have at $2.7 million. And so we'll end with about $395,000 in debt service. The tax rate is about .93, which is up about 12 cents from last year compared to what we turned in. We do believe that will go down, because the amount that we put in for that new debt that we are issuing, we believe it's high. And so once we sell the bonds and we know what the payments are, we'll go in and adjust these, and we expect that property tax rate to drop.
So your numbers do anticipate what the new...
Yes, yes, yeah, we put in a payment for those. Education. It shows we're going to end with about $2.1 million this year. I do not believe it will be that high. Mine was more about like 1.7. So our total revenue will be about $12.5 million. We have budgeted, for our budget, 10.8, and then transferring from education to operations, about 1.8. So total expenses will be about 12.7. So we are going to dip into some of that Ed Fund balance that we have accumulated for next year. With our enrollment dropping, that's one of the reasons why you want to have an Ed Fund balance, so you can do things like this. We'll dip into that. So we'll still end with a positive at the end of next year. Moving on to operations, they're showing that we're going to end at minus $451,000. I do not believe it will be that. I'm thinking more minus $600,000, which didn't sound great. But then I went back to the beginning of the year. We started this year at minus $1.26 million. So if we're at minus $600,000, if we've cut that in half, I feel like that's a pretty good year for us. When you go through, look at the tax levy, and then take off what we are predicting for tax caps, and then our miscellaneous, which does include that Ed to Ops transfer. The budget amount is exactly what we have in revenues, so we should end exactly where they're predicting will end this year. The tax rate for operations is .7126, which is about 2 cents lower than last year.
Okay, any questions?
I just want to say thank you again for all the work that's been done to lower our deficit in the operations side of things. You know, there's a lot of processes and things put in place to reduce that amount, and I appreciate the work going into that.
We also want to let our families know that we are going to do a practice school cancellation notice through Parent Square. We will get this out to our families, both through Parent Square and on Facebook, so families know what we're doing. We're going to do it on a Saturday, so people don't think that school is closed that day or delayed. But we really just want to make sure that families are getting the notifications in the way that's best for them. So we talked about, let's do a practice one, just to make sure everybody's getting those. And we don't want to wait until the day of a delay, and then we find out that people didn't get the information.
Will there not be the call, the all-call then?
No, you'll still get that, yeah. But we want to practice it, because we've never done the all-call through Parent Square. So you'll get a text message through Parent Square, so, so yeah.
Okay. A text, but not a phone call?
No, you'll get a phone call.
A phone call and a text?
Yeah.
Okay.
Someone's going to knock on your door, too.
They just want to make sure. That would be amazing. Thank you. And next week is homecoming. I'm looking forward to seeing all the fun and festivities that our kids will be participating in. And I especially look forward to the parade and tossing out some candy.
Okay, thank you. Items from Chief Operations Officer.
The only thing I had is a couple of building updates. We've waited a long time to get our elevators fixed. Probably been working on it almost two years now. I think in October, it will be two years. They are done. They're just waiting on the final inspection, and we'll have our elevators back up and working. It was a long process, right? I mean, we were behind in a lot of codes, because our elevators were old. And so, and it took a long time to get a lot of parts. So that's done. We had some work done at OJ that finished off the bond that we took out two years ago. Things you don't realize from 1994, right? When they don't put flashing in, and we wonder why we have leaks in all ways. And so Garland Company, who we hired to check all of our roofs and all of the envelopes of our buildings, said at OJ, hey, you're missing this flashing. And so we were able to put flashing where the gym is, and on the other end, where the gym used to be, if you know what the school light looked like 30 years ago. And so they were able to run flashing through there, and then repair some masonry. And Tim said it poured that first night, and he's like, man, we didn't have any leaks. So very good news, right? So that finished off the money we had in that bond. So that was money we didn't have to spend. It was still with our trustee, and we needed to get it finished off, because we got a notice that that needed to be done really soon. So that worked out really well. So those two things are done. And now the next thing, right, is finally, in the spring, hopefully, getting to work on boards. I know Chad's excited about that. One more, one more winner.
Okay, thank you. There's no administrators here tonight. Items from board members. Start at Rod.
I don't have anything to say.
Nothing.
Anything?
Nothing.
Okay, I don't either. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.